Buenas tardes. Quiero pedirle al interpretador actual en el canal español que comience la interpretación de la reunión. Para aquellos que solo han venido a la reunión, la interpretación en español está disponible y los miembros del público o el personal que quieran escuchar en español pueden entrar en el canal español haciendo clic en el icono de interpretación en la barra de Zoom. Parece un globo. Si están en su teléfono o tablet, localicen los tres puntos, pulßen ligeramente y marquen un punto en su idioma preferido. Hagan clic en "Hacer listado" para activar y comenzar la interpretación. Una vez que se unan al canal español, les recomendamos que apaguen el audio principal para que escuchen la interpretación en español. Claudia, ¿podría reestablecerse en español?
Sí. Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos. Para todas esas personas que se acaban de unir a la junta, vamos a tener interpretación en vivo en español. Esto va a estar disponible para los miembros del público o el personal que deseen escuchar esta junta en español. Se pueden unir al canal de español haciendo un clic en el icono o el globo terráqueo de interpretación que se encuentra en la barra de Zoom. Y se ve como un globo terráqueo, un símbolo de mundo. Ahora, si ustedes se encuentran en su celular, tableta o iPad, ustedes pueden localizar tres puntitos, ya sea a mano derecha en la parte superior o inferior de su pantalla. Abajo de ellos pueden hacer un clic ligero y ustedes pueden poner una palomita en su idioma de preferencia. Va a ser importante que también hagan un clic donde dice "Listo" o "Terminar" para activar el servicio de interpretación. Y ya que ustedes se unan al canal en español, recomendamos que también cierren el audio original para que solamente puedan escuchar la interpretación en español. Muchas gracias. Estamos a sus órdenes. Muchas gracias. De vuelta a ustedes.
Bien. Hola Janice y Dwayne. El tiempo es 1:32. Llegará la orden de la reunión. Madam Señoría, ¿podría llamar a la orden?
Gracias, señor presidente. Miembro de la alcaldía Rogers.
Presente.
Miembro de la alcaldía Ocrepki.
Presente.
Miembro de la alcaldía McDonald.
Presente.
Miembro de la alcaldía Fleming.
Presente.
Miembro de la alcaldía Benuelos.
Presente.
Vicepresidente Alvarés está ausente. Señor presidente, deténgase.
Presente.
Deje que el registro refleje que todos los miembros de la alcaldía están presentes con la excepción del vicepresidente Alvarés.
Muchas gracias. Pasaremos a la cuestión número tres, los elementos de sesión cerrada. Tenemos tres de hoy. La cuestión número 3.1, una conferencia con el consejo legal acerca de la litigación anticipada. La cuestión número 3.2, otra conferencia con el consejo legal acerca de la litigación existente. Y luego la cuestión número 3.3, un asunto de empleo público. ¿Hay algún miembro del público que quisiera comentar sobre alguno de estos temas? Estoy viendo... Así que Janice está alzando la cabeza. No. Dwayne, ¿tenías un comentario?
Sí.
Bien. Dwayne, tú tienes.
Hola, mi nombre es Dwayne Dewitt. Soy de Roseland. Quería agradecer al gerente de la ciudad por toda la actividad durante el tiempo que ha estado aquí. Y veo que el número 3.3 está hablando de su reemplazo temporal mientras va a otro lugar. Así que con eso en mente, quería asegurarme de que, mientras también miras la demanda de la comunidad de la piedra de la piedra, ustedes, amigos, tomen una revisión fiscal dura y no gasten dinero adicional si es posible. Como caso particular, ese gran acuerdo que el gerente de la ciudad les dio sobre no subir sus salarios para el año siguiente después de este, mantén eso en marcha, no importa quién estés reclutando para venir y ser un interrumpidor. También, en la conferencia con la comunidad de piedra de la piedra, por tal vez, la arbitraje y la resolución temprano, Tom, mira, sabes, no te vamos a dar mucho pan de panza. Básicamente, esto tiene que ser lo que se resuelve a través del sistema legal de una manera que los contribuyentes de las ciudades sean favorecidos, si se quiere. Entonces, volvamos a la situación del gerente de la ciudad interrumpidor. No vayas a buscar otra vez y gaste mucho dinero como has hecho años antes, varias veces, y luego conseguir gente que no se queda por mucho tiempo. Esencialmente, se gasta mucho dinero y todavía estamos en el mismo estado que estábamos hace unos años, si se quiere. Así que, aquí hay una idea. Haga una reducción en fuerza en la parte superior, déjense algunos amigos conseguir paralizadores dorados, despeguen, conseguir su jubilación, hacer lo que hacen, y contrata desde dentro con los trabajadores más jóvenes, los que quedan aquí por diez, doce, tal vez incluso quince años en esa posición. El señor Blackman en el pasado estaba aquí durante décadas, así que se puede hacer de esa manera y ayuda a la ciudad a tener estabilidad. Por favor, no vuelvas a ninguno de los anteriores gerentes, tampoco como hemos hecho antes. Eso no nos ayudó. Solo costó dinero adicional porque dicen, hey, somos Worthmore, hemos estado allí. Dejemos de hacer eso. Miremos esto como, okay, tenemos que ahorrar dinero porque vamos a tener aún más dificultades financieras previas. Para ahorrar dinero, miremos dentro nuestro propio departamento, mantén la posición llena como un interrumpidor. No promueve hasta la parte superior. Manténlo como una posición de interrumpidor hasta el periodo en que Miss Smith hubiera dejado con esa freno de salarios, luego terminando. En ese momento, haz tu contratación de alguien desde dentro. Te habrás ahorrado cientos y cientos de miles de dólares. Puede que no sea mucho para ustedes, amigos, pero para los contribuyentes, eso realmente es mucho dinero y tiene valor. Así que gracias por su tiempo. Volveré a los comentarios públicos más tarde hoy.
Gracias, Dwayne. Janice, ¿cambiaste tu opinión?
No ofensas a ti, bro.
Vaya, Janice.
Lo siento que no estuviese aquí justo cuando comenzaste. Gracias, señor presidente. Janice Carmen aquí. Y solo quiero decir que exactamente lo que Dwayne está diciendo es lo correcto. Y es lo que he estado discutiendo desde que usted, Diana, había nombrado a Terry Saunders a nuestro distrito para representarnos en planificación, cuando él vive en Distrito 4, que es Victoria's. Y la votación ha sido muy difícil. Y me gustaría estar en el board de personalidad. Y le dije ayer a Dina. Y fui allí. Goté muchos documentos copiados. Hay algo... Siento una agresividad en mi cara. Tuve que pagar casi $8 ayer para obtener copias de documentos del oficio del secretario. Cuando llegué a casa, la solicitud estaba medio llenada. También investigué a las dos personas que se supone que deben estar corriendo. Lo que no necesitamos es un abogado con licencia suspendida, a menos que pueda defender eso. Y la otra es una persona que tiene una obituary en el sitio web.
Así que, Janice, tenemos que mantener el tema.
Okay. Creo que deberías poner esta cuestión de votación para el board de personalidad para otro día.
Así que, nuevamente, regresamos a los temas de sesión cerrada, Janice.
Bueno, para llenar una solicitud.
¿Algo más relacionado con la sesión cerrada, Janice?
Pero de todos modos, no. Solo estoy diciendo que Dwayne está diciendo lo correcto. Necesitamos gente que esté invertida en Santa Rosa para estar en los boards, comisiones y en el consejo de la ciudad.
Gracias, Janice. Sin otros miembros del público, cerraremos el comentario público y rechacaremos la sesión cerrada.
Welcome back, everyone. The time is 4:01 and we will call this meeting back into session. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rogers?
Present.
Councilmember O'Kreppke?
Here.
Councilmember McDonald?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Ben Willows?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alvarez is absent. Mayor Stapp?
Here.
Let the record reflect, all council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor Alvarez.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to Item 5, 5.1, which is our Personnel Board interviews. And we have two candidates here. Thank you again both for coming out on a rainy day today. Ms. Specter, let's start with you. If you wouldn't mind making your way to the podium. We'll ask a couple of questions and give council a chance to chat. Thank you again for submitting your resume. We've all had a chance to review it. I'll ask just a couple of very broad questions and then turn it over to my colleagues for any additional thoughts. Can you provide just a bit of background related to your interest in the Personnel Board?
Yes, and actually, the resume and application that was submitted was from last year. And since then, I have moved on to a position of the Chief Administrative Officer with Bellevue Union School District. Previously, I was the Director of Human Resources. And so that's my interest for at least the last 15 years. I have been on the human resources side of education in both large districts, Santa Rosa City Schools, here at Bellevue, and in Southern California. And I just find that employee relationships and making sure that people know the expectations of what their work is and how in their role they serve either students and/or the public is important. And being able to provide support for adults to do that and make good choices on behalf of the community and citizen is important to me.
Thank you very much. And you've already answered my second question to some extent. But could you again speak to your experience with personnel issues, with labor law, with management, the kinds of topics that are germane to the Personnel Board?
Absolutely. It's interesting that you ask that question because right now I am engaged in several disciplinary issues and so making sure that people are held accountable for their actions. We are also at the table with both of our bargaining units and so negotiations and making sure that appropriate compensation and support is also something that I'm actively involved in. And all aspects of both hiring, including onboarding, training, et cetera, mandatory trainings for staff as well and making sure that all risk management and compliance issues are addressed. And the district are areas of expertise and knowledge that I hold.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll look to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. Looking both ways, all right? We like to keep things succinct here in Central City Council. Thank you again for your application. Thanks for coming out and answering a few questions tonight. We'll let you go.
Absolutely, thank you.
Much obliged. All right, Mr. Corey, you're next up. Thank you again. You have the advantage of seeing how this goes. So you know the two questions that are coming your way. Take a moment and just explain your interest in this position.
There we go. So my interest really comes from doing the LSR program recently. Really diving deep into the Government and Politics Day really got me interested in this. But then also working with the County of Sonoma for the past five years. Kind of wanted to dive deeper into the realm of government and politics. But then also expand my knowledge of different boards and committees that I can join. And so actually, a couple of the cohorts within LSR told me that the Personnel Board, Open Government Community Board as well, and the Community Advisory Board might be something of my interest and something I should really look into. So I figured why not throw my hat in the ring and gain some more experience, gain some knowledge, but then also get back to the community as well, being a part of the board.
Excellent. And just to be clear, this was the LSR Government and Politics Day that the city manager and I participated in, inspiring your class to lean in, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's good politics. Second question. Could you give a bit of background in terms or into your experience with labor law, employment issues, management, et cetera?
So it's small experience, so more of just dealing with conflicts within my own unit with team members as well, being able to address different issues they've had with just procedures or policies as well. Being able to come back and talk to the supervisor about how to help them manage these procedures and how to get work done properly and efficiently as well. And then even making sure that the training they got from the lead worker was precise and up to date and making sure that they would be able to complete their job to the fullest and be able to make sure that they dot all the i's and cross all the t's when it comes to different procedures that work within our division.
Excellent. Thank you for that. I will look to my colleagues. Any questions from the dais? No questions once again. Again, we like to keep things succinct. Thank you for coming out. Thank you both. We've got your information, we've got your applications. These interviews have been helpful and we'll be picking this up for discussion later this meeting.
Thank you.
With that, we will turn to Item 7, a report from our city attorney, if any, on our closed sessions today. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item 8.1, our proclamation for Zero Waste Week. Councilmember McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm having a bit of an issue with my technology, so I think I got it pulled up now. Whereas the City of Santa Rosa has assumed a leadership role by setting zero waste as a goal and adopting a zero waste resolution and sets a goal of zero waste by 2030. And whereas each year, Zero Waste Sonoma and community partners host a one-day zero waste symposium as a local opportunity for industry and the public to gain light, to gain insight on zero waste topics and trends, share ideas and network. And whereas, since 2022, Zero Waste Sonoma has coordinated and promoted a week of events aimed at educating and empowering various sectors of the public to act towards zero waste. And whereas, since 2022, Zero Waste Sonoma has collaborated with North Bay groups in Sonoma, Napa, and Marin and volunteers to expand these event offerings, which have included clothing and produce swaps, recycling, compost and water treatment facility tours, repair and reuse fairs, litter cleanup, food waste reduction classes, environmental film screenings, and more. And whereas, the City of Santa Rosa, along with public, private, and nonprofit organizations and community groups, will be hosting zero waste events throughout the week of October 11th through the 18th. Now therefore be it resolved that our Mayor Mark Stapp, the Mayor of City of Santa Rosa, on behalf of the entire city council in recognition of our community, do hereby proclaim October 11th through 18th, 2025, as Zero Waste Week.
And Leslie, do we have you back for the second meeting in a row? Oh wait, you weren't here for the last Zero Waste.
Our Executive Director was here.
My apologies, I remember Zero Waste was here. Well, we're glad to have Zero Waste back. We're glad to have you here today. Say a few words.
Yes, thank you so much for taking this opportunity to acknowledge Zero Waste Week. This is the fourth year that we've done this and it's grown every single year. We've actually made it a permanent program at Zero Waste Sonoma and expanded into Marin and Napa Counties. So as Councilmember McDonald covered, we really do a big range of events to bring in community, to educate and inspire zero waste action, not just October 18th, you know, this week, the 11th through the 18th, but throughout the year. So we just want to say thank you to Santa Rosa for this support and hope to continue this into many years to come.
Very supportive indeed. And when we had Recology and Zero Waste here a couple of weeks ago, we barraged them with detailed questions about various kinds of recycling and trash management. Were any of those unanswered? Did any of you have personal recycling and whatnot, questions that you needed answered? All right, not today. Thank you. Let's go to public comment. Would any members of the public like to say some nice words about Zero Waste Sonoma? Dwayne?
Yes, hello. My name is Dwayne DeWitt. I'm from Roseland and I definitely want to say good things about this type of a program. Zero Waste is very helpful in more ways than one. One of the things that could be fun is if you coordinated with the volunteers that do the creek cleanups and all the debris that we bring out of those different spots. It goes to the city. The city doesn't necessarily separate it out. And I found that out the hard way when city workers were looking at me like I was odd because I was separating out the different stuff, the recyclable, the steel. I mean, we get bike frames, we get all kinds of stuff. City workers, their approach is everything goes into one dumpster, taken over to the city yard, and then that goes out. And I'm hoping you folks will take the approach of zero waste, the approach of recycling any of the materials. There's that old motto, we use it in Roseland a lot, reduce, reuse, recycle. And this would be a perfect opportunity for the zero waste stuff to really take hold with the city and our Roseland volunteers. Then I see here later you're going to have an appointment of an alternate to the Zero Waste Sonoma Agency. And I was curious if you could explain that a bit. Is it just elected officials that get to be on that agency? And if not, can volunteers be on there? Because I'd love to volunteer with some zero waste action. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Would any other members of the public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And thank you again for coming, Leslie. Let's take a photo. Come on up. We will move on to Item 9.1, our Community Empowerment Plan Update. Ms. Horta?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'm Anna Horta, Community Engagement Manager with the Communications and Intergovernmental Office. I will be presenting today the Community Empowerment Plan Update for the month of October. On October 9th, the Violence Prevention Partnership held the 14th Annual Violence Prevention Seminar. The sold-out event was highly successful with 225 attendees representing local schools, law enforcement, and community-based organizations. This year themed standing together to support survivors focused on how we can work together to better serve the survivors of violence in our community. On October 17th, in response to an urgent need for blood donations locally, the city will be hosting a blood drive event. The Vitaland Blood Mobile will be stationed in the parking lot at Findlay Community Park, 100 Stony Point Road, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. All community members are invited and encouraged to participate and help save lives in our community. On October 18th, the Santa Rosa Fire Department Violence Prevention Partnership and Zero will be attending the Sonoma County Museum Block Party and Resource Fair at the Sonoma County Museum, 4257 Street, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. This special event honors the opening of their 29th Annual Dia de los Muertos exhibition with an unforgettable afternoon of art, performances, lowriders, and delicious food. On October 22nd, join Vice Mayor Alvarez, Councilmember Rogers, and Community Advisory Board Members Diaz and Hemzaji for the District 1 and 7 Community Meeting. The meeting will be held at Roseland University Prep 1931 by Warner Drive Number 1 at the Big Room from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Please find details about District 1 and 7 Community Meeting at srcity.org/civicalert or email communityengagement@srcity.org. On October 27th, the Santa Rosa Fire Department and the Water Department will be attending the Santa Rosa City School Career Day at the Sonoma County Fairgrounds Hall of Flowers, 1350 Bene Valley Road, from 9:00 in the morning to 12:30 p.m. This event is an effort to expand career-connected learning, also known as work-based learning. Also on October 25th, the Planning Department, Santa Rosa Police Department, and Zero will be attending the Vince Harper 16 South Park Summer Day and Night Festival at the Santa Rosa Veterans Memorial Building, 1351 Maple Avenue, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. The festival is designed to build knowledge and educate in the public, bringing resources to the community, and celebrating the South Park neighborhood. On October 27th, the Santa Rosa Police Department will be hosting its trunk-or-treat celebration along with Violence Prevention Partnership, Santa Rosa Fire Department, and other community departments at the Santa Rosa Veterans Memorial Building, 1351 Maple Avenue, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. This drive-through event provides a safe space to trick-or-treat from the trunks of Santa Rosa Police Department vehicles. Finally, on October 28th, join Councilmember Krepke and Community Advisory Board Member Freitz for the District 6 Community Meeting. The meeting will be held at the Epicenter, 3215 Coffee Lane, Club Room 300, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. For details about this district community meeting, please visit srcity.org/civicalert or email communityengagement@srcity.org. And that concludes the Community Empowerment Plan Update for the month of October. Thank you.
A packed report as always, Anna. Bringing it back to council for questions or comments. Mr. Krepke?
Yeah, thank you so much for that. And if anybody out there wasn't able to make it to any of my colleagues' forums, for whatever reason, you're welcome to mine, especially if you have kids, as there will be stuff for kids to do at mine because of its location. So plenty of video games and claw machines to distract your children while you partake in the community government process.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we can't highlight the district meetings enough. Those have really been successful. And I'll highlight as well the Violence Prevention Partnership seminar last week that unfortunately, because several of us were out of town, some of us couldn't attend, but that was sold out, packed, second year in a row. Really a great new tradition for the city. So thank you and thanks to our Violence Prevention Partnership team for organizing that. Anything else from council? All right, we're a quiet bunch today. Thank you very much. We'll go to public comment. And Mr. Dewitt, do you have something for us?
Yes, sir. I asked to use the overhead projector, please.
Of course.
I've turned it on here. You've got it there. All right. Thank you to Ms. Horta for giving us that nice report, and two things came up that made me think important to remind you of one community engagement thing we do annually in Roseland. The upcoming date of the 22nd of this month where Mr. Alvarez and Ms. Rogers will be there for a town meeting, we're hoping it'll be different than some past meetings where we listen to a lot from city staff, and then there's just a little time to talk with the public. We would really like to have it be the public gets to talk to the council members, and then after they've heard what the public is interested in and wants to know about, they can answer the questions. Having a meet and greet where you have to sit through a long presentation really gets people a bit uninterested, if you will. Anyway, on the overhead up there, you'll see Roseland residents will be out on Saturday the 25th, and we'll start at 10:00 in the morning, rain or shine, doing our Make a Difference Day along the creek there and through the neighborhood. Now, also, I want to point out that in this article, which is in the Sonoma County Gazette right now, we're thanking the City of Santa Rosa out in Roseland because you folks are working on Burbank Avenue where there may be a crosswalk coming across from what we call Pomo Park and Preserve over to Roseland Creek Elementary School, and a pathway's already been put up in there. You guys should go look at it. It's raining today. Tomorrow would be a good way to see how it handles the water and ride your bike on it and do your stuff. And then also, what's really a really good thing is the city has started to work on a stormwater sewer project down McMinn Avenue in the heart of Roseland, and that's been something needed for decades, and this is the only forum, the Sonoma County Gazette, that's pointing it out. It's coming out. You folks are behind it. Good things are happening because the city council and city manager Smith have been paying to Roseland, paying attention to Roseland, excuse me, in a big way. Wanted to keep that going forward also. So kudos to all of you, especially Ms. Horta and the new hire, Ms. Misty Harris. You can get her out there, come to that meeting on the 22nd, and we'll start getting her engaged with us in Roseland, where we have a motto, "Nothing but a good time." Bye now.
Thank you, Dwayne. Would any other members of the public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Anna, thank you very much. Great stuff as always. We'll move on to item 10, our city manager and city attorney reports. Madam, city manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So the city's economic development team is hosting the Business Expert Express Seminar on October 20th. It's an event that's tailored to entrepreneurs and small business owners who are in their first year of operation, are preparing to open soon. It will provide connections to other seasoned professionals and local resources, and it's designed to help new business owners launch and grow their businesses. So that is October 20th. For more information, you can go to srcity.org to register, and you need to click on the calendar link. Also, there are a few spaces left for the popular Halloween at Howard Trick or Treating Event. That is scheduled to take place on October 25th. And again, you can go to srcity.org, click on the calendar for October 25th, and all the details will be posted there. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam, city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. We'll open it up to public comment. Would any members of the public like to comment on either the city managers or the city attorneys' reports? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go on to item 11, Statements of Abstention or Recusal by Councilmembers. Are there any statements of abstention or recusal this evening? There are none. We will move on to item 12, Mayor's and Councilmembers' Reports. Any reports this evening from my colleagues? Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things for me to report out on. I want to report out on the successful Violence Prevention Program Seminar that was last week that I had the pleasure of attending, and I want to share a few highlights from that really successful event. The Violence Prevention Partnership held its 14th Annual Violence Prevention Seminar on October 9th with 225 people attending. The theme of this year was standing together to support survivors, and our featured keynote speaker was Jesse Leon, and he was the author of the book, "I'm Not Broken." He shared his experiences of a survivor from human trafficking, sexual assault, gang participation, and drug addiction, and his pathway to healing from the trauma and how he turned his life around, and earning his master degree in public policy from Harvard University. One of the things that Jesse shared with us was when people are broken, he said, "Even broken crayons can still color." And it was just such an amazing story about surviving the horrific things that he had to endure in his youth and how we as a community can support the young people in our community. It featured also six breakout session and topics of human trafficking, victim-centered restorative justice, support and resources for victims of violence, and future of funding for violence prevention efforts. Santa Rosa PD also conducted two breakout sessions, one on fentanyl awareness and the other on gang awareness, and also gave a full climate update of what's happening in our community at our full session. And so I just want to say thank you to SRPD as well for all their involvement. The event was sponsored by Peter E. Haas Jr. Family Fund, Individual and Family Support Network, Sonoma County Probation Department, and the County of Sonoma Board of Supervisors. In addition, the law enforcement chaplaincy and Sonoma County provided service support throughout the event, providing support to attendees who needed it. And then I also had the pleasure of attending the Park a Month event on Saturday. It was at North Park, which is at Comstock School, which is where I went to middle school, which is why I went there. And I want to say thank you to the Interact Club who came, and it was a large group of kids that refurbished the entire dog park with the help, of course, of staff and all the volunteers that showed up, and I think they had over 50 volunteers that weekend. So thanks to the Parks Department for hosting that, as well as thanks to the Violence Prevention Program Team for all they did to support the youth in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Brief report, I just want to say I had the honor of being sworn in this past week as the president of the CalCity's North Bay Division. So I will be serving for a year, and I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, and that is a great thing for the city. Thank you for doing that, Natalie. Mr. Krepke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a real quick report out on yesterday's Economic Development Subcommittee meeting. Had a great conversation around local preference and gave some feedback, which will hopefully instigate a further discussion at the council level. We'll see how that goes. And then also, I wanted to touch on the great success of, since we are ending summer, the great success of Live at Juilliard, which saw its most attendance ever, as well as the success of our newest effort, Second Sundays, which is right after the farmer's market on the second Sunday of the month. Kids' games, activities, stuff like that, it was a real big hit. And then finally, upcoming, starting next month, what you may have seen some of them already out there, is the SR Public Art Walk. We've got about nine installations going in the downtown area, artists from all over, local to Arizona and Minnesota. And we got a sneak peek at our presentation of them. They're pretty cool looking, and so be on the lookout for that. There's a website coming out where you could follow that, and that'll be up for, I believe, the next two years on display. So that's all.
Thank you. And before we go back to Ms. Fleming, one more point from you, Ms. Rogers?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. I also want to say great job to SRPD for their faith in blue. It was good to see so much community engagement. It was bigger than it has been. I think we had 21 congregations with 35 services, so we were able to engage with a lot of people in the community, and it was great. And thank you, Mayor, for all of your support. And again, good job, SRPD.
Thank you. Ms. Fleming?
Yeah, a couple of things. A week ago Friday, I was part of the opening of the Nevada Narrows. I don't know if anybody's heard of this project. It's like that area on the 101 now, you know? We opened another lane. Apparently, it's been a big deal. It's been a long time in coming, and I just wanted to let everybody know that it was a huge collaboration. It was an honor to be a part of it. But while we are excited about that, we ask for patience around HOV lane change and know that in the new year, we're going to have, in the spring, we're going to have increased connectivity with Smart and the Larkspur Ferry, and that these transitions are going to ease, and even on the hyperlocal, the transition from making it easier to drive, but also easier to ride public transit is going to get easier. And on a hyperlocal level here in northern Santa Rosa, we will be breaking ground pretty soon here on the 101 Bike Pedestrian Overcross, and I hold great hope that eventually the Jennings Crossing from Smart will open, and we're going to just have a slew of connectivity from really close in our neighborhoods all the way down through San Francisco. So congratulations to everybody who worked on that project. Thank you to staff for it, and appreciate the public for your ongoing support to make that happen. Wanted to thank Anna Horta, her staff, Misty Wood, as well as both chiefs for their support in my district meeting last week in District 4. It was well-attended. I was grateful for the opportunity to be supported in connecting with my constituents, which is always a good time. And finally, it's with a heavy heart, I want to note the passing of my colleague on the Smart Board, Mark Milberg. He was a good friend and a good colleague and just an all-around mentor, and he will be missed.
Thank you and condolences. With that, we will go to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any of the mayor's or council members' reports? Seeing none, we will close public comment, and we will move on to item 12.2.1, our Board, Commission, and Committee Appointments. This is our opportunity to appoint one member to fill an at-large vacancy to the Personnel Board with a term expiring December 31st, 2026. Let's begin by calling for public comment. Are there any members of the public who have thoughts on this item? Thank you, Dwayne. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment, and I will bring it back to Ms. Fleming for a discussion or for a motion.
I'm grateful to both candidates for applying. I think you both have merits. I think that for me, I'm going to nominate Stacy for the position as a result of your experience in the industry heretofore.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second by Ms. McDonald. Any additional discussion? Mr. Krepke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree that the extensive history in this is important. However, Marcus, I would say, please take the advice and continue to apply for the various boards and commissions that we have. Your point of view is going to be very important based on your work with other municipalities as well as in the public. So, you know, keep applying. There's always openings that pop up.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
And there may be current openings on boards that we can help you to get involved with.
Ms. Benwellis?
Thank you, Mayor. I will second that. There are some openings, so please definitely apply.
And I'll concur as well. Yeah, thank you for being here today. This is a very technical position, and I'll cast my vote for Stacy for that reason as well, but we've got openings, and we want you on board. So thanks for throwing your hat. So thanks for throwing your hat in the ring. Ms. McDonald?
Yeah, I just also want to say, thanks for throwing your hat in the ring. I felt like everybody wanted to say it, but I'll be voting for Stacy as well this time. But please stick around. We need your energy and your expertise.
All right. With that, we have a motion and a second. I think we can call the vote. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Ben Willows?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez is absent. Mayor Stapp?
Yes.
The motion passes with six affirmative votes.
Thank you. All right, we are not done with our appointments yet. We'll move on to item 12.3.1, the appointment of an alternate to the Zero Waste Sonoma Agency. Historically, we've had a staff appointment as an alternate, someone on the city of Santa Rosa's staff who has a technical interest in the work that Zero Waste Sonoma does. We would like to go back, we would like to continue that tradition. And so for that reason, I would like to, with council's consent, appoint Josh Carstensen to, as the alternate for Zero Waste Sonoma. And thank you, Dwayne, I'm going to do that right now. We can go for public comment. Dwayne, is there something you'd like to say?
From Roseland, I'm a volunteer in a number of different things, and I am currently volunteering with the city on the Board of Public Utilities. That's not a staff position, I'm not paid, but I think of it as like I'm part of the family now. And so maybe we could look at me, next time you get this opportunity for one of these situations, and not just immediately give it to city staff. That makes it feel like it's the old boy network. We don't want that, even though I am an old boy, and I will admit that. What we would like to see is that there be a new face, perhaps, in the zero waste. We can do it with haste, but I don't know. I'll still be around. I don't ever want to be like Cactus Pete, so I just realized I rhymed a couple of words. My apologies. That won't happen again. All the best.
Thank you, Dwayne. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I will bring it back to council for, hopefully, a motion and a second.
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ocrepki and a second by Ms. McDonald to appoint Josh Carstensen as the alternate to the Zero Waste Board. Whenever you're ready, Madam City Clerk, we can take a vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Ben Willows?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez is absent. Mayor Stapp?
Yes.
The motion passes with six affirmative votes with Vice Mayor Alvarez absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 13.1, our approval of minutes. Are there any edits or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, we will adopt the minutes as submitted, and we will move on to our consent items. Madam City Clerk, whenever you're ready.
14.1 is a motion, contract award, Piner Creek Crossing, HAWK, High Intensity Activated Crosswalk. 14.2 is a motion, approval of First Amendment to General Services Agreement Number F-002803 with Green Tara Incorporated DBA Clone Digital Print and Copy. 14.3 is a motion, First Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with Exela Incorporated for permitting and inspection software. 14.4 is a resolution. Resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Rosa approving the Third Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement Number F-002578 with DTA Public Finance Incorporated as amended to authorize the city manager or designee to make non-substantive changes to the amendment. Redlines of this resolution have been provided to council, are available with the administrator at the top of the well, and will be uploaded online tomorrow. 14.5, ordinance adoption, second reading, ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Rosa amending Section 1-08 of the Santa Rosa City Code and adding Section 1-09 of the Santa Rosa City Code.
Thank you. Looking at council, are there any questions regarding these consent items? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. Mr. DeWitt?
Regarding the HAWK light system, that's a very good purchase, especially because it's not with city funds. So I'd like to ask that you folks talk to the grant writer that went to get these funds from the state, and have them do it for Burbank Avenue also. Right there at Roseland Creek Elementary School, it's now becoming one of the most dangerous places. The people on that street don't pay attention to the 25 mile per hour speed limit. You've got an elementary school and a middle school there. It's really very dangerous. We don't want it to happen like with Patrick Jerome Scott back in the late 90s, who was killed out on Bellevue Avenue, because we didn't heed the need for having safety measures near the schools. If you could put one of these grant applications into the state for a HAWK lighting system along Burbank Avenue at Roseland Creek Elementary School, and at the other side where there's the, it's called Roseland Accelerated Middle School, have it at both sides of that long school stretch would be a great safety measure for us. Thank you for your time on that.
Thank you, Dwayne. Would any other members of the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ocrepki for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask just one question, if I could bother Director Hennessy. I believe we, to address the public comment, I believe we have in our pipeline a number of HAWK crossings going in. I can't remember what that number is, if you could give me a ballpark.
Thanks for the question, council member. The active transportation plan that you all saw and approved in the summer has more than 100 crossings in it, varying between HAWKs and RFBs. There are, I don't know, maybe 20 that are currently funded, and we're going to just kind of do them rolling annually. So different levels of control between the HAWK, which stops vehicles, and the RFBs, which are flashers and are for more narrow roads like Mr. DeWitt mentioned typically. But we continue to assess, based on state ordinance and state law, what we're allowed to produce on different roads. But I would anticipate over the next several years, there will be dozens annually.
Thank you very much. With that, I will move items 14.1 through 14.5.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second by Ms. Rogers. Whenever you're ready, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Ben Willows?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez is absent. Mayor Stapp?
Yes.
The motion passes with six affirmative votes with Vice Mayor Alvarez absent.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking at the time, and it's been a roller coaster ride of a meeting so far. And we have 16 minutes before we can move on to our next item. So we will take a break for 16 minutes and return precisely at 5 o'clock. Thanks to everyone for their patience.
Welcome back, everyone. The time is 5 o'clock and we will reconvene into open session. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rogers.
President.
Councilmember Ocrepki.
Here.
Councilmember McDonald.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Benuelos.
Here.
Vice Mayor Alvarez is absent. Mayor Stapp.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor Alvarez.
Thank you. All right, and we're going to launch right into our public comment on non-agenda matters. This is the chance for members of the public to comment on items that are not listed on the agenda. Mr. DeWitt, I see you're there, and I hope we have the overhead already warmed up. Could you lean a little closer to the mic, Dwayne, sorry? Is it, or is it not, is it working?
At the top of this overhead, you'll see. It's about the EIR for the wastewater project back in 1997. And at that time, we were talking about water issues because the City of Santa Rosa had a southwest-area-specific plan put together. That specific plan, which we called the SWAP, was about annexing all that land out there to the southwest. It took a number of years to have it happen. The reason I put this up there now is because it's completed and a lot more buildings coming in. A lot more sewer-type issues are going to come forward. So I'm hoping you'll always pay attention to these topics by looking back to the stuff from the past. And this EIR is very helpful for that type of stuff. The article below it, I make the mention about the stormwater project that's coming in on McMinn Avenue. And that is a problem that the folks on Hughes Avenue and McMinn have faced for all those 30 years as development has been coming in more out there. What folks didn't realize, from the city, those folks, there was a former riparian corridor there that was then built over. And nature didn't realize, and that kept the water flowing the way it always had. So the people on Hughes Avenue get flooded backyards when big rains come. They've had to put sump pumps in. Luckily, the city now has come forward and will put forward that stormwater. It's fresh, it's new construction, and that's going to help in a big way. What we're hoping is that as you folks see more development come in out there, you look at also something known as the sustainable groundwater. There's an agency in the county now for it. Every time you develop more over the aquifer's land that was where it was permeable and you put in the development with impermeable surfaces, it creates less of that sustainable groundwater. Over there in Roseland, we really need it. People still use it for their irrigation of their gardens and the good stuff like that. And then at the last minute, I think I have, if you'll put the clock back up so I'm correct and never go overtime, I wanted to make sure that you knew about the public knowing what I said earlier today in closed session. Definitely, hard-headed fiscal oversight on money. You're going to be broke for a couple of years, the manager's leaving. But she left a great deal there for the next year, if you follow up on it, without having to raise the wages for the new hiree you'll bring in. And I think you should just use interim staff for that entire year, then after hire somebody new. Thank you kindly.
Thanks, Dwayne. Ms. Flores.
Likewise. Good evening, council. I wanted to congratulate City Manager Smith on her new journey as she takes the position as City Manager with the City of Sacramento. That is a huge achievement, and I can't wait to see all that she accomplishes. So I did bring her some flowers, and I'd like to wish her the best of success on that endeavor. And I also, while I'm here, wanted to address the elephant in the room that I was a bit frustrated about by receiving public records. It was brought to my attention through a public records request that there was a memorandum which required your city manager and city attorney to basically get approval from HR to take time off. And my mom was the former finance director for the City of Runert Park, and that is absurd. I've talked to other councils who think that's absolutely absurd as well. And so I know that Mayor Natalie, your former mayor Natalie Rogers was mayor at that time. I don't believe in any way that that decision was hers alone or at all. If I were to put money on it, I'd probably say Councilwoman Victoria Fleming. So it just showed me that you don't respect your staff, and I found that highly, highly inappropriate. Aside from that, I had a great time getting to see Santa Rosa Police out in the community over the weekend. I got to see Chief Craigan and many of your officers as they went around to different faith-based communities for the Faith in Blue event. And that's really impactful for me. I do follow Christ, and so being involved with the churches, I think, is a great way to build bridges in the community, especially since many people who have formerly had substance issues or been incarcerated end up finding themselves in the church, and their relationships with officers may have not been the best. And I think it's a good avenue for them to establish better connections. So I thank you guys for your time. God bless you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Adina. Janice, are you looking to speak?
Yes.
All right, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Janice Carmen. I spoke earlier at the other meeting, and I just want to bring it back full circle about the boards and the commissions, and that who on your board chooses whoever it is, for whichever commission or board it is, it's somebody from your district. And you say you can't find anybody. I've heard this before. This is ridiculous. The public doesn't even know the commissions or the boards are open, as a matter of fact, most of it. And when we do find out, we end up with what I got yesterday, which was a half-filled-out application. And I actually wanted to apply. They didn't know if I could apply yesterday. And whatever, it's all right. But also, the person that you chose, I believe that she didn't fully fill out how long she'd been here. And that's another comment I want to make, that following Dwayne DeWitt, we want people who are from here, as much as we can get them from here, and people who understand what we do here and how we think here. And we want to bring people in, we want to bring business in, but we don't want people to just come for a brief time and then move on up the cycle and go somewhere else and get another job. And this was brought home to me by an ambassador whom I met in my wanderings. And he said, you know what? It kind of bothers me. Some of these people look like they come in, they show up for two years, and they're gone. And we don't want that. We want people who are in it for the long haul, and it's going to be the people that have the children, the people who have further educational needs and stewards of the environment, people who understand building and can understand that it's not just tree cutting. It's tree cutting and marrying that with the thoughts of what kind of environment are we going to have when we get finished? There are all kinds of cities all over the entire country that have been ruined by just building on every parcel, and we don't need to do that. We can be very selective about what we do. We have people that are very interested here, and now we even have Korea. Now, Korea is very interesting, especially since pensions was mentioned in the same sentence with that. And on that, I'll leave that. But anyway, we need to be careful, and we need to be stewards of the environment as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we will close public comment on... Ms. Rogers.
I just had a comment. So I also wanted to point out, since Adina brought that up, that the City Manager Smith was also sworn in as vice president of the CalCity Managers Group and will be representing all city managers throughout the state. So that's another accomplishment that she made, so.
Oh, that's a good addendum.
Congratulations.
Thank you for mentioning that. Thank you for that work. All right, thank you, Ms. Rogers. All right, so we have closed public comment on non-agenda matters, and we will go to our main show for the evening, our public hearing related to fee adjustments for recreation and parks-related programs and services. Jeff and Jackie, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Stapp. Council members, good evening. So yes, I'm Jeff Tibbetts, Deputy Director of the Recreation Division, and with me Jackie Hammond, our ASO. And we are here this evening to present to you a recommendation of amending the recreation fee schedule. With that, Jackie, you'll get us started.
Hi, good evening. So City Code established in 1995 that city council set park user fees by resolution. Periodically, over the last 30 years, city council has made both comprehensive and minor adjustments to this schedule. To clarify, the fees that are in front of you are our park user fees, which include entry fees, administrative fees, and facility rental fees. The authority to set our other fees, such as program fees and activity fees, special event fees, have historically been granted to the Director of Recreation and Parks. As you know, we have restructured our department, and we are asking that authority be granted now to the Director of Housing and Community Services. The reason that we delegate that authority to the Director is to allow us to align our program fees on a seasonal basis based on the actual cost of supplies, staffing, and contract instructors and such. A little bit of history about our revenue. On this slide, you'll see a graph of our budgeted and actual revenues for the last 15 years. As you can see, from 2010 to 2017, we averaged about $3.5 million annually, closely matching our predictions. In 2017, you'll see a pretty significant decline in our revenue. This is the effect on our community from the Tubbs fire, and that included using one of our recreation centers as an emergency shelter. We started to recover from the Tubbs fire when unfortunately we were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Since 2021, when the COVID pandemic restrictions were lifted, we have seen a strong rebound with our revenue, and we are now nearing our pre-pandemic revenue levels. Just a note, our current cost recovery rates are about 48% of our direct program costs and 40% of the total division costs. To put this in context, the national average for cost recovery in parks and recreation, according to the National Recreation and Parks Association, is approximately 24 to 34%. I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff to talk to you about the changes that we are proposing.
Thank you. So here, we've kind of broken down the fees that are part of the fee schedule by each program area. The first area being our community center rentals. And so when we're talking about that area, this is everything from just a small business meeting at the Findlay Community Center to private events like weddings or even large community events that take place in our community center. So to give this area some context, staff are issuing approximately 450 contracts each year. These contracts cover over 1,200 separate uses of the facility, because a lot of contracts have multiple dates to them. And it represents over 5,000 hours of use. In addition to our community centers, we have a clubhouse in Doyle Park and Franklin Park. That's an additional approximately 65 contracts per year covering over 1,800 sessions and over 3,700 hours of use. So with that said, between the two, you're talking about around 9,000 hours of rental use. When we're looking at increasing revenue, it stands that our hourly rate for rentals is obviously an important area for us to focus on. So what we did, you see the proposal, we're projecting that it's about a 14% revenue growth in this area. And really what we did in this area is some more cleanup. So we had, believe it or not, I should have counted and given you the number, but we had rates for every single room. And within every single room, we then had six rates for each room. And this was because of resident, non-resident status, and then whether it was a nonprofit, a private, or a commercial rental. So in kind of consolidating all this to one fee and then also consolidating all those rooms. So instead of listing every room we have in our facilities, categorizing those as our small rooms, medium rooms, large rooms, and then our premier room, which is essentially the large auditorium that we have at the Findlay Community Center. Three things that we're going to get out of this, I think all three equally important. Number one is it's going to be more transparent for our customers. Looking at a list of, again, it's probably well over 100 fees in the existing one and breaking that down to four fees is much more understandable. And then if you're a nonprofit and you get a discount or you're not a resident and there's an added fee, it's much easier and much more transparent to the customer. The second thing is it's going to be much more efficient for our staff. And as we look at raising revenue, cutting costs, those things, we know efficiencies for staff is going to be incredibly important to, you know, as a manager, you make these things and you think you're doing something that's going to help your team, but when you hear it from your team, we have a staff member who's now in a different role but has worked in our facility rentals for over a decade, literally issued thousands of permits. She saw the fee schedule and her immediate reaction was, oh my gosh, why didn't we do this before? It would have been so much easier when I was doing all those permits. So we feel really good that we're on the right track there. And then the last thing that I think is going to be really important is we continue to look for financial sustainability within the Recreation Division is this is really going to clean up our registration software and the data that we're inputting. Having all these rooms with all these different fees makes it incredibly challenging. Jackie did a tremendous job pulling all this information for me to have this data to share with you, but it's very difficult and time-consuming to do so. As we make this shift, it's going to make the data much more accessible to us, which means as we continue down this process, we're going to be able to spend more time analyzing that data and proposing strategic ways to make recreation more cost recovery instead of spending so much time just trying to figure out what the data is. With that said, so then moving on to our park permit area, very similar to our community center permitting, but it's out in our parks. And as our community centers range, so do park permits from very simple picnic reservations, that's just a family or a small gathering at a picnic site, they come, they use it, they leave, to very large community events and using our special use permits for the parks, such as the Father's Day Car Show where we're bringing several cars into a park, thousands of participants, vendors, trash plans, all those different things. So some are very simple, some are very complex. Again, giving some context to that area, picnic reservations, we issue about 1,000 contracts a year for picnic reservations. And then for park special use permits, approximately 500 contracts a year. That again covers 1,500 separate events and over 10,000 hours of use in our parks just through that, that one program area. Similar to what we did with the community centers, just kind of consolidating how we're doing those fees and simplifying some things and with really some slight increases in those areas, but because it's so many hours and so many permits, we're anticipating a 20% revenue growth in that area as well. Moving on to our sports fees and field rentals, in this area, we're projecting around a 10% revenue growth. The number of contracts in this area doesn't sound like much because it's about 77 contracts, but that's because of the, a contract covers a lot with these youth organizations and sports organizations that use the field. So of those 77 contracts, it's over 5,500 separate uses of our fields and it's over 25,000 hours on our fields. So again, this is another one of those areas that is a very big aspect of the programming that we do. Again, all that data is just what we're permitting out. That's none of the programming that we're doing out in the parks as well as the Recreation Division. And so one of the fees that we wanted to call out here because I wanted to kind of clarify what that fee is and exactly what we're raising for you, is our increase to youth league per player fee. That's increasing it from $7 to $10. As you can see up there, the last increase we had in this area was 2015. And again, what I want to really specify here is this is a per-player, per-season fee. So yes, there are some large organizations out there that are going to say, oh my gosh, if they have 1,000 participants, they're going to say my permit went up $3,000. And that's true. But again, it's for the whole season. If they were to pass 100% of that fee onto their participants, that means their registration for the whole season would only have to go up $3 for the participant. So a league, a very reasonable soccer league, might be charging $200 for the season. If they charged $203, they would cover that full cost by just passing $3 onto the participant. So I just wanted to kind of give that some context of this is not an hourly fee or a daily fee, it's the fee for the whole season. And last on this slide, I wanted to call out, because we had non-resident and resident as kind of a status that was throughout our current fee schedule but not on our proposed, is I wanted to make sure it was seen that we still have a non-resident fee structure there. It's just instead of identifying it to every room or every permit or all those uses, we've simplified it. That is a $10, if it's an hourly rate, it's a $10 add-on. So any permit, $10 an hour added for a non-resident. And then if it's a daily permit, it's a 10% with a minimum fee of $25. So that means for some of our picnic reservations, that might be $60, 10% would only be $6. Again, that's a permit that's for the whole day, so they would be charged the 25, so a non-resident would pay $85 for the picnic instead of 60. But then our larger events where the permit fee might be $2,000 because it's for an event with 1,500 people, in that case, they would be charged the 10% for the day. So the $2,000 permit for the day would become a $2,200 permit for the day. Next slide, please. All right, moving on to Howard Park, we have proposed to increase fees there on K-Land and our boat rentals. Our projection is that that'll raise revenue growth for Howard Park operations by 19%. This is increasing our K-Land ticket by $1. We sell approximately 75,000 K-Land tickets per year. This number fluctuates a lot based off of weather. You may recall this last spring, we had a very bad breakdown of the train. Thank you to our, our maintenance team for doing a great job getting it back on the tracks, but it was down for a very extended period of time. So those things will fluctuate it, but generally around 75,000 tickets. You may recall that we did come last year with an increase to that fee and at that time kind of pointed out the fact that prior to 2005, we had not raised that fee since 2008. And increase of staffing, those, staffing alone, Howard Park operations were, in that time, were costing us $100,000 more a year. So when we brought that fee last year, we brought it as this is a step that we're taking. So it's not, you know, too much of a surprise that we're coming two years in a row with that increase. What we found raising from $3 to $4, or $2 to $3 this last year is we had a very good year at Howard Park. It did not, we did not price out. And so we feel confident in our ability to raise that fee again, back-to-back years. And again, it doesn't look great when it's back-to-back, but in the context of now raising it twice since 2008 gives it a little more context. As well as in the boat rentals, raising of fees there ranged from $3 to $8, depending on the boat. It makes boats either $15 for the hour or $20 for the hour. And the main evaluation we did of this is looking at Spring Lake, which is obviously a walk away from Lake Ralphine and Howard Park, and making our, our fees comparable to what is being charged at Spring Lake. For the aquatics section, we're proposing revenue growth of 21% in that area. And giving some context to what is taking place at our pools, our public swim was over 21,000 drop-in public swims. For lap swim, it's a little more complicated to pull that data. We have about 8,000 drop-ins, but we also have monthly memberships and we have over, we sold 620, about 625 of those monthly passes. So obviously, a monthly pass could translate to as much as 30 drop-ins per month. So it's hard to give that same figure, but just between those two, about 30,000 drop-ins. And then memberships, which you can see there, we're proposing to increase that fee from $20 for an individual to $50 for an individual. We sold just under 1,000 memberships this year. So you do the quick math there, if we increase that by $30, that is quickly a $30,000 increase in revenue for aquatics. What I want to point out is part of the reason we were more aggressive there is a membership is not required to attend the pool. Our membership program there offers benefits with reduced cost and so it's really intended for our regular users. When we evaluate it, it's a dollar decrease on a swim. So for the vast majority of those 1,000, we don't think we're going to sell too many less memberships because of this raise, because for the majority of regular users, it's still going to be well worth it for them to purchase the membership and get those discounts on a yearly basis. There may be some members that do the math for them and determine, ah, it doesn't work out for me. That's fine, they don't buy the membership, but they still come to the pool and participate as a drop-in participant. And again, to point out there, with that dollar increase on lap swim and public swim, again, this is our first increase in that area since 2017. And then for our senior center, a similar approach in terms of the membership. So again, membership at the senior center, also you do not have to be a member to participate, it just provides some benefits with discounts. So individuals will be able to choose whether or not it's still worth it for them with the increase of the individual membership going up from $24 to $50 and the couple membership going up from $40 to $80. If they do not participate enough that that discount isn't worth it, they can choose not to purchase the membership and still participate in everything they participate in prior. Or if they do the math and it's worth it, then they can continue to receive the benefits of purchasing the membership. We sold about 400 individual memberships for the senior center and 75 couple. So again, when you see the increases times the number of people, this is a way that we can not raise fees on everything and not limit access, because again, membership isn't required for access. So a way for us to, to increase revenue in an area without pricing out of a strategic way to not price out our, our members or our participants. With that, I'll pass back to Jackie for an overview of the impact.
So we are proposing the new fee schedule take effect January 1st, 2026. This will allow us to notify our user groups, permit holders, and to publish the new fees in our spring/summer activity guide. We project this fee schedule combined with our activity fees and program fees will increase revenue about 4% in this fiscal year and then 14% in our next fiscal year. This will improve our cost recovery to 54% of direct program costs and 45% of total division costs. Finally, one of our values and priorities as a department is ensuring accessibility to our programs. We have a well-funded, need-based subsidy program and it will be available to ensure access. Additionally, we, as we implement these fees or if we move forward with implementing these fees, we'll be monitoring our participation and accessibility and come back with adjustments if necessary. So finally, it is recommended by the Housing and Community Services Department that the council by resolution approve fees for various facilities and delegate authority to the Director of Housing and Community Services to set the necessary fees for seasonal programs, activities, excursions, special events, and athletic league based on the city's actual cost for those activities. And if you guys have any questions or comments, we're happy to take those.
Thank you both for very clear presentation. Let's bring it back to council for questions. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you for the presentation and thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question on the program costs where you're talking about 54%, of it would cover program costs and 45% of total division costs. Does that mean that we only recover from our fees 54% of what the city pays out to run the programs? And when you say direct or division costs, is that we cover about 45% of staffing? Can you explain that?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll explain how I calculated that. So 54, but the, the direct program cost, I included like the recreation supervisor, you know, cell phone costs, all of those costs that are attributed to that specific program area. When I'm talking about the division costs in the greater, I'm talking about, you know, IT costs, you know, water costs, some of those things are incorporated. So we, we almost always, when you take out, you know, the deputy director and the supervisor and all that, we try to cover 100% of our direct, direct costs, but there is more costs associated with that. So that's kind of how I delineated those and I can come back with more specifics if you're interested, but that is generally what I mean by that.
That's really helpful. And I think what I'm trying to see is giving direction that you can increase fees as needed based on the program costs or direct costs, is where are we at when we're budgeting to see, are we actually flat on offering these programs to the community? Are we taking a loss so that we know how to budget or, you know, where we're at? And I think it just, when we're in budget crunches, we always want to know how the budgeting works on this. So I appreciate those statistics and you can get back to me, but, but that, that's really helpful to know. And then I just had one more question about how people actually go about renting spaces to us. If you could give us some context of where do they go to get these? Is it Parks and Recs? Is there a specific like QR code that we have that's posted at all of our sites that people can scan to rent things or what do we do so that if they wanted to rent those?
Yeah, so that team is all housed out of the Findlay Community Center. For any recreation programming, people could go to Santarosarec.com to get more information. But if they wanted to reach out directly to staff, it would be at the Findlay Community Center. Business hours are 8 to 6, Monday through Friday.
I think that's helpful. And maybe what I really want to say is, do you think we could do some more marketing around having QR codes or something posted at some of our like biggest sites that we have? If Howard Park or, you probably have the statistics on what's the most rented, so that people could scan that and say, oh, this is how I rent a picnic area or this is how I do it, just for the ease of the user. Is there a way for us to promote that or have that in place? Might be helpful to the community. Because I don't know necessarily that I would know to go back and actually go online if that's a way to actually promote what you're, what you're doing.
Yeah, we could definitely look into those. We work closely with the CRO team and production of activity guide, social media, all the different things. So that's definitely an avenue that we could continue to explore.
And I believe we do have a few A-frame signs at some of our locations that do have a QR code that bring you to the rental information. So I think we have begun that process, but we can be a little more aggressive with it for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Benuelos?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I just wanted to say first, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate the simplifying of fees and all of that organization. I think that's great. And the rental fees and all of those things, I think, are very reasonable. The only thing I was a little bit concerned about, and I understand it's voluntary, is the membership fee for seniors. That seemed like it had gone up quite a bit. And even for couples, I was just like, whoa. Just thinking about the seniors that I know and, and I'm just wondering, do you think that by raising it this much, and it for, to me, as a, just a everyday consumer, this is a lot of money, whether you're doing single or as a couple. And just to say generally, when I see couple fees, usually there's some kind of a break there because there's two of them and I don't see that, I just see it doubled. So I'm just wondering, I guess in the long run, number one, if it's voluntary, do you think you're going to get as many memberships, you know, based on, because most seniors are, especially the seniors that, I'm thinking of the ones that go to Findlay Center specifically, are on fixed income. So I'm just, so I'm just kind of concerned about that, whether or not we're going to end up losing money rather than making money. So anyway, just to get, just to, if you maybe talk a little bit about your thinking process on, on that fee.
Yeah. So first, just to clarify, we, there is a break for a senior center membership. It's $50 for a couple, it's $80. Yep. So, and thank you for, Councilmember Benuelos for bringing that up because there is a point that I wanted to mention in, in the senior section that I skipped past. And it's not just with seniors, it was with all this programming. I know Jackie mentioned, you know, a needs-based subsidy program. We have our scholarship program. We've, as we've been going through this process, we've been discussing that a lot as well. We have had some generous donations come through the senior center. And so we are working on a proposal that'll allow us to build out kind of a different way to approach some of the scholarship programming with the senior centers. One of those things that we're looking at doing is, is possibly making that membership available, scholarship assistance for the membership as well, as well as other programming. So it's an area where we really feel, because of some of the donations we've received that we have and that are some ongoing, that we have some sustainability in developing that. So it's an area where we really feel, because of some of the donations we've received that we have, and that are some ongoing, that we have some sustainability in developing that scholarship program further, and then using that as a pilot to hopefully expand across the entire division. So we know we're going to have to make tough decisions that raise prices, and obviously when you raise prices, the concern is equity and accessibility. So we're kind of on two paths at the same time, hoping that we meet the middle, where we can be more fiscally responsible for the city, but also continue our mission of making sure that we're serving people who do not have access to programs.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Let's open it up to public comment. Would any members of the public like to comment on this item? I see that Dewayne submitted his name. Is Mr. DeWitt still in council chambers? He is not, and seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we'll close public comment and bring it back for a motion. Any final comments from?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, so we actually needed to open a public hearing and then...
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, yes. So we, first of all, we need to open the public hearing. Would any members of the public wish to participate in this public hearing? Seeing none, we will then close the public hearing. Thank you. And we'll bring it back to council for any final comments or a motion. Actually, one, just one comment from me before we go into the motion, Ms. Benuelos. I just wanted to say thank you again for this presentation. And to put it in context, which both of you nicely laid out, and which has been discussed both here in other meetings and at Long-Term Finance, the alternative to raising these rates, to doing what we're doing right now, is to potentially cut some of these programs. So it is important for the public to keep that in mind, that not only are many of these fees overdue to be raised, simply because we haven't done it for so many years in the face of increasing prices, but given the city's current budget context, as we were doing last spring, we were having the conversation about which of these programs we can keep. By raising the fees like we're doing here in this responsible way, which we should have been doing probably a little bit earlier, that's going to protect these programs for all the people who like to use them, including me. I have to say that the aquatics fee raises hit very close to home, Jeff, as you know. Nevertheless, I will be supportive, but I do want the, I do want the community to be clear that the reason we're doing this is to protect these programs, because they are so important for our community, and we will hopefully be doing this more regularly in the future. So again, we can protect the viability of these programs going forward. And again, you highlighted the needs-based assistance, that is going to be there. I'm glad to hear it's expanding, because we obviously have people who need access to these services, and the city is doing a nice job in making sure that that's available. So I just wanted to highlight that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Benuelos for a motion.
Thank you. All right. Resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Rosa, establishing new and revised fees within the city's fee schedule for recreation and parks-related programs and services, and wave for the reading of the text.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Ms. Fleming. Madam City Clerk, you can call the vote whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Benuelos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez is absent. Mayor Stapp?
Yes.
The motion passes with six affirmative votes, with Mayor Alvarez absent.
Thank you. We will move on to item 19, which is our last public comment on non-agenda matters. Are there any members of the public here who wish to comment? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.